...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One quick announcement I'd like to make is a reminder to people about the Frozen River Film Festival, it's gonna be this weekend, a lot of activities, if you haven't been to the film festival at Winona State, it's really, it's really a great, great event and brings a lot of people to Winona, a lot of great films, I'm looking forward to it. And also wanted to say a quick thank you to the fire department and the police department and all the city people that were involved in the fire down on Walnut and Third Street a week ago, week and a half ago now, and what a good job everybody did and the fact that nobody was hurt is all that more remarkable, I think, and thank you for all you did and our fire chief is here and our assistant fire chief for inspections, Jason and Kurt, I don't know if one or both of you would like to say a few words and update to the council and the people about, about that fire.
Mayor, council, I'll be brief, it was another downtown fire, you know, and that was our third and last year and a half, and you know, if you have some questions about the inspection end of it, Jason is here to answer some questions. The fire itself was a very, very difficult fire to fight, we had three different layers of ceiling that we eventually had to get through to get to the actual fire itself, it was in a void space, and Jason and state fire marshal and the ATF are still investigating that, so he might have a little more insight to it. As the mayor said, we're extremely lucky, nobody got hurt, and I think the biggest thing is having three downtown fires of that magnitude, to be able to stand in front of you and say we had no fire fatalities or firefighter injuries throughout the whole thing is quite remarkable, and we are quite frankly living on borrowed time because there's many cities that have similar buildings to that that experienced massive fire losses, Minneapolis just had a fire last winter, very similar building, they lost 16 people, so for, we're extremely lucky. And like I said, Jason, you want to add anything for as far as inspection goes, as far as the building inspection for the investigation?
Mayor, council, just to let everybody know that we're in talking with Chief Biddle and ship captains, we're gonna try and develop, try and get a little bit more aggressive with our inspections downtown, focus on that, wanna try and do Tuesdays and Thursdays will be fire inspection days, and Fridays for the shifts, we'll hopefully do possibly four in the morning and two in the afternoon, same with Fridays, there's about close to 700 occupancies in Winona, and we, our focus is to try and get into every single one of them once a year, so that's our goal.
Okay, other questions from council members? I guess I'd just like to add, I had a chance to go in that building on Friday and actually walk around on the second floor, and it's kind of remarkable that somebody wasn't injured in the extent of the damage, but also it seems to be there's a feeling in the community, this is a foregone conclusion, that the building's coming down, and I guess that's not exactly what's going on right now, I think that there's a definite interest on the part of the owner to try to save the building, there is an interest on the part of the State Historic Preservation Office and the Preservation Alliance of Minnesota and working with the owner and possibly bringing in an independent or an unbiased structural engineer to look at it, the city building inspections department has also said that, you know, there's no reason to immediately take this building down, so I think there's an opportunity to take a breath, I guess, and sort of step back and take a look at this and see whether or not there isn't a way with tax credits and other options to possibly keep the building.
I hope so, it's beautiful buildings.
Anybody else have anything? If not, thank you very much. City manager?
Just a couple things, staff has been working with an engineering consultant on a number of transportation infrastructure issues, we will be coming, hopefully we'll be able to do a pre-council in March on the corridor study, including Broadway, Main and Huff Street, the intersection report, and a proposal for the grade separation on the east end of town, we would like to do an analysis of whether or not the, that grade separation over the railroad should be located on Mankato or Louisa Street and look at the, both of those as alternatives. We believe it's important to be moving ahead on that proposed project, just in case state funds become available and we can get ahead of the game on it, so we'll be coming in March and April with those issues to present to council for future funding options.
Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings is item 2.1, the basic wetland application decision for Automotive Enterprises LLC.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak. Mr. Mueller, are you wishing to speak? You are, good.
This application pertains to the proposed redevelopment site by Dahl Automotive, it includes a proposed new GMC dealership located on the site of what was Cornerstone Community Church. The issue that we have before you tonight is rather, had a chance to go through, is rather complex, and what I thought I would do, just kind of summarize that in kind of layman's terms, just to give you an idea of what, what this is all about. Simply stated, last year it was determined that the site has a couple of, is subject to a couple of wetland basins, the first of these is located on the site itself, is located generally on the center west side of the site, that one contains about 3,500 square feet of area, the second basin is located in the ditch directly north of the redevelopment site, and following a delineation report, the applicant submitted a basic wetland application which proposed to fully impact the smaller wetland located on the property and to impact to some degree the wetland that was located in the ditch. Following the submission of the report, the Winona Technical Evaluation Panel, which is a group of people that I work with in these matters, met and ultimately determined that there was a case to be made for replacing the smaller wetland, but they didn't necessarily agree with impacts to the ditch wetland, so they directed the consultants engineer to kind of relook at that whole thing, they came back with a proposal to modify utilities, stormwater utilities, so that the ditch impacts no longer exist, so they kind of removed those from the equation, and given that, we were left with simply the single smaller wetland located on the site. The TAP has recommended approval of the application as modified, so our recommendation to you tonight is to approve that recommendation through the adoption of the resolution that you have in your agenda package. What will happen if you approve that, the developer is committed to purchasing replacement credits from a wetland bank up in Wabashaw County, and that action will be taken as soon as, probably within the next couple of days. No wetland impacts can occur until that transaction is complete, and we're notified from the Board of Water and Soil Resources that credits are transferred, so basically what they're doing is they're simply replacing the wetlands that we will be lost from this site at the wetland bank, and again, the TAP is fully recommending that action. Under our wetland policy, any replacement activity requires a hearing before council, and again, that's what the purpose of this hearing is tonight, but again, following your consideration, if you concur with the TAP's recommendation, we would invite you to adopt the attached, attached resolution.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Mark? Yeah?
Does, does this reconfiguration provide additional protection for residents in the Johnstone addition from excessive water issues?
Yeah, we're, that is, that's been discussed significantly out there, and it was a major issue when we talked about the site plan, and it also came up in our zone change requests and so on and so forth. Initially, the project called for a single pond located at the bottom end, that's been modified now to include two ponds, but, and I shouldn't call them ponds, they're called rain gardens, one is located at the small, the lower end and one's located just upland next to what was the Brendel property, that area, and so what they're doing is taking it, breaking into two smaller stormwater detention areas, the upland detention pond would serve to filter water from the roof of the new building, so that'll remove that from the lower pond, everything else will drain into the lower pond, ultimately it ends up in the, into the ditch that flows under the highway into Lake Winona, so we don't anticipate there will be any impact on property owners in the neighborhood. All drains downhill away from them, so.
Thank you.
How about across the highway then, if it's all draining downhill?
Right, it drains.
Sure, low property.
To, right, I mean, it actually bypasses them some, now there won't, there may be times where, you know, the, the water level of the lake is maintained at pretty much a constant level, and sometimes it's artificial, sometimes it's natural, depending on time of year, and so that level won't, won't change a whole lot, so drainage that may flow from this development into that area will just be part of that whole system, and shouldn't be a problem with anybody.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in water quality in Lake Winona, so you saying that
this, the two rain gardens that are proposed and also the, the fact that they're not gonna be disturbing that, that ditch, that that will hold back the water and allow clean water to filter in to Lake Winona.
Right, that's the, that's the intent, these are fairly high-tech rain gardens and they're designed to filter out all imperfections, and in this case, they're actually taking some, they are taking a storm line that currently flows directly into the lake and they're rerouting that into one of the pond areas, so they're actually improving, you know, drainage from the Toyota dealership site too.
Okay.
And coming down into these, these ponds, so the ponds will, they, they're designed to filter water, and when it's all said and done, the water should be fairly clean when it comes out.
Okay, so there's a lot of pervious surfaces at the Dahl Automotive facility, and these, this plan will take care of that.
I have been assured that the ponds that are proposed are large enough, the city engineer has taken a look at those and he feels the same way, that they're at adequate size to take care of all of that, so.
Good, okay, thank you.
I'm not an engineer myself, but I have to rely on people to tell me that, so.
George?
Just for clarification now, this wetland bank you're talking about, they have land that already is a wetland, or they would take a portion of this land and make it into a wetland?
Right.
Is that what they do?
Right, the wetland, the wetland that's being impacted has to be replaced at a two-to-one ratio, so in this case, .08 acres is being impacted, so what they have to do is to acquire .16 acres from the bank. The way a bank works is that a property owner could establish a wetland bank, in other words, he could create a bank, that bank has to be certified by the state Board of Water and Soil Resources as a bank, and then for projects like this, then you can buy credits from that bank, wetland credits, in other words, in this case, I think this bank has, I can't remember, 60 or 70 acres of wetland that are available to purchase, and in this case, they won't be purchasing many, but that's available for any type of project like this in southeastern Minnesota, so we have a number of banks in this area, we're fortunate to have those, and, because without them, these types of projects would be tough to, to work, to work out, and so.
And then just for an understanding, people think a wetland doesn't mean that it's wet, correct?
In this case, the wetland that's there is, it's type 2 wetland, which generally means that water, the soil is saturated, but you don't see it on the surface, it doesn't come to the surface, like you might with another type of wetland, so it's there, I've, I've seen it, I've actually seen water just barely floating, floating above ground, but for the most part, it's just saturated soil that you don't, you wouldn't know it's wetland unless you were looking for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Anybody else wish to speak to this topic? Anybody else here to speak? Last chance, anybody here to speak to this topic? Hearing none, close the public hearing.
I'd move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passes.
Excuse me. Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is an appointment to the Fine Arts Commission of Marcia Radcliffe, it's Marcia.
No.
Marcia.
Move to approve that appointment?
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, passes.
Item 3.2 is a request for docking from the American Queen for August 10th, move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul, any continuing discussion? Al?
I'm assuming since they're talking about requiring 50,000 gallons of potable water that definitely they would be the ones responsible for paying for that, right?
That's correct.
And this is the only time they're stopping here this year, and it's good to have them back, because they weren't here last year, and we hope that we'll see them more in the future. We'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Kerry's.
Item 3.3 is a license agreement for mobile concessions with Rubio's Family Mexican Restaurant, and I believe Maribel is here if you have questions, but the proposed agreement has the same terms as the 2014 agreement.
Move to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Kerry's.
Item 3.4 is a request for a temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for the Polish Cultural Institute, Polish Constitution Day celebration on May 2nd.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Kerry's.
Item 3.5 is a request for a temporary on-sale license for the Polish Cultural Institute Apple Festival, October 4th.
I'd move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George, any discussion? George?
I'm just guessing that that word that Michelle always asks about, it must mean delicious apple.
Apparently, I was very excited to see that.
My question is, how is it pronounced?
Oh, it's not me this year, George.
George handles that every year.
I'm gonna say Samajni Jelpka, not saying it's right, but anyway, I know Piva, we know, I discussed it with Michelle.
Beer, you know beer.
Beer, right, on your trip to Poland, you'll see a lot of that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, Kerry's.
And item 3.6 is a request for a temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's Church for the Luck of the Irish Festival on March 14th.
Well, that one, I guess I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Jerry, seconded by Paul, I think, Paul, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, the Irish get it now.
And item 3.7 is a request from Woodlawn Cemetery Association, and Tim Leahy is here to make a presentation, and we do have a handout from the Mr. Leahy has provided.
Okay, Cemetery Superintendent, whenever you're ready.
I'm not a public speaker, so I'll be brief and just.
Is that turned on? I'm not sure it is.
All right. Think a little bit better here. So as Mark had alluded, I've been the superintendent for roughly about a year and a half, and I'm here tonight to share some information and review the information that I've provided you. As I mentioned, I've been the superintendent for roughly about a year and a half, and came into the job looking at the business and realizing that we had some financial challenges. At the time, we had roughly about maybe 10 to 12 seasonal employees working at Woodlawn, that dramatically changed to roughly about three employees and myself working last year. And so what I'm here tonight is to be a little bit more proactive than what happened last year, which, if you're not aware, Woodlawn was in the paper quite a bit in regards to the conditions, and basically, the four of us tried our best in regards to maintaining the 55 acres for Memorial Day, but unfortunately, the public didn't feel that way, and I was probably not the most popular person at the time. But living through that and looking at the upcoming Memorial Day, I had some conversations with Judy Bowdway in regards to looking at what we could do with the cemetery, with the city of Winona in regards to maybe a joint venture, and looking at from a standpoint of seeing if we could work together in regards to preparing for Memorial Day for this coming year. And so with those conversations, Judy had asked me to identify some areas that we could look at, and then after our conversation, she suggested that I come and speak on behalf of Woodlawn. There again, I guess I just look at it as an opportunity that it's roughly 55 acres, the average employee at Woodlawn, now including myself, is probably in their early 60s, and so we have a challenge to maintain the 55 acres of property. So with that being said, I guess some of the areas that I identified within the cemetery in regards to getting some help, I drafted this letter before I got a chance to read the article, which Paul Double had indicated that we have too many parks to maintain already, but, you know, when you think of Woodlawn, granted, it is a cemetery, but we really kind of consider it kind of a park as well, and we want to maintain it, and so, long-term, what we've done, or what I've done, is we've put together a campaign, which we put together last year, now this year, we just have to implement the plan in regards to raising money for Woodlawn, but in the meantime, we have to look at ways of, what are we gonna do this year in regards to preparing for Memorial Day? And so my thought was looking, not only looking at the city in regards to receiving some help, but looking at another way, and the other way was basically, I've contacted pretty much all the service organizations within Winona and have met with them briefly to talk about an idea that I came up with, which was basically similar to what you see if you go down the highway, we're calling it a DOP part of history, which is basically looking at service organizations assembling five individuals that could put a couple hours at the cemetery and take ownership of a particular section. The map that has indicated, the highlighted areas are the areas that either service clubs or businesses have agreed to look at helping out Woodlawn for the upcoming year. One of the things I proposed to the city was looking at maybe helping out in regards to our East Edition, as well as Section M, which are two large areas. Since the conversation with Judy, civic organization has agreed to look at Section M, so we're flexible, we need help, there again, we don't want to go in with this year looking at Memorial Day and the public outcry that we had last year, so just trying to be a little proactive, so I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I guess, I guess I'd like to ask a question first here, Tim, does your board support this letter?
Yes.
They do, okay, I guess I had, I had seen the letter, then I had a conversation with one of your board members, and my understanding was that you were not going to be asking for lawn mowing assistance, but that's not the case, you do, you are requesting that.
I guess we, we were looking at every avenue that we could, Mark.
Okay, all right, just want to be clear.
You bet.
Questions for Tim? Al?
Yeah, what's, what's the, help, help us understand perhaps, maybe those that don't know, the relationship between the city and Woodlawn and how that came about?
Well, Woodlawn is a nonprofit organization, it, the association started back in the 1800s, but basically, anyone that buys a burial lot at Woodlawn is part of the association, but the relationship with the city, I understand, is the fact that we're nonprofit, we're a private entity, so in regards to getting help, it's been a little bit of a challenge. I just wanted to look at opening the doors in regards to seeing if there would be possibilities in regards to any type of relationship.
Jerry?
We met last year with you, one of your board members, Judy, myself, I believe Mark may have been there, and the mayor, if not, it was Keith, but we met last year. You had indicated that there was gonna be, the fundraising effort was gonna kick off in the winter, is there a reason why it, it hasn't kicked off yet?
Well, part of the challenge is that has been something that myself and Tom Kiefer have, I think our intent was to kick it off in the winter months, we ran into problems with trying to set up appointments with, our approach is that we're looking at trying to raise enough money for the next generation.
Right.
So we, we're looking at two-phase approach, which is, the first approach is to identify roughly 20 individuals in the community and talk to them and look at donations that way. If we're successful there, then we were gonna look at a public appeal. With those first 20, it's been a challenge in regards to setting up appointments and really get that going. I can tell you, in the short period of time, we've raised over 40,000, part of that's come from the board director, members themselves contributing in regards to keeping this thing going, so.
Paul? What has the response been from the service organizations that you've talked to?
I think, like any other service organization, I think it has to kind of follow within their mission, I think I look at it from the standpoint of trying to develop a relationship with them, but I think with the 10 to 15 servant, service organizations that I've talked to, I think there's a general interest, so far, we've got a handful that have committed so far, but, you know, you could always use more.
Jerry?
I can't recall who called the meeting last year, but one of the things that I had recommended last year at the meeting, I just threw it out there, I said, what if the city were to adopt one of the, one of the sections? City manager did an exceptional job, and she asked me, what city park would you like not to be mowed? And there's, there's a good question here. We don't have extra staff, so if we do take on other maintenance operations, we are going to have to tell staff which one of the parks, whether it's too many or just enough, will go with less maintenance. So that is one thing. This was, you know, I thought it was a grand idea, hey, why don't we, why don't we take on one of the sections? But the city manager did an excellent job and asked me that question. Which park do you not want mowed? So as we're considering this, if we decide on something like this, we have to also give direction to staff on which other area do we decide to let go? If, you know, whatever hours we put in there, hours not going to be spent elsewhere. That's the only thing I'm bringing up at this point.
One of the other concerns I have too is that right now, we're still dealing with this ash problem that we've got. And I don't know the additional time over normal maintenance within our park system that the ash and the replannings that are going to take, need to take place. The impact is already, I think, stressing capability. Michelle?
I have a deep love for Woodlawn. I've spent hours of my life up there with the Cemetery Association, with the Cemetery Walk. I just don't see this as something that the city can take on. And it's not from a lack of, you know, respect for the ground or the people that are buried there or the history inside of it. I just, it's not under the city's management or control, and I don't think it should be. And I think that you need to continue with what you're doing, which is trying to raise funds, find support within the community. There is a large group of Winonnans who have a deep love for this community and its history. And I know there are going to be people here who want to give. In fact, I, I can't think of anything I've attached to with the Historic Society, or the Masonic Temple, or any organization where people haven't come out to be supportive. And, and I think that's where you have to go. Because I don't see how, given Jerry's point, we can take these things from parks we're responsible for and put them out there. Not because, I, I understand your problem. I've spent time out there with you. I understand the problem, but I don't think this is something we can take on. Not with what we're looking at trying to even maintain the parks we currently have. We've lost, we've lost facilities this last year because we couldn't maintain them. So I think we have to focus our energy there and hope the best for Woodlawn. And that's kind of my stance in it. It's, it's with all the love for Woodlawn, because I, like I said, have spent many years there. I mean, many hours there over the years, but it's just, I don't see that as something we can do. That's where I come from.
I think there is an access issue in Woodlawn for some city, I don't know if they're control dams for runoff or not, but I remember when Pat Kapusman was, was in your position, may he rest in peace, that the city helped in restoring some of the bridges so that the larger equipment could get back up into the hillside by the water reservoir to, to maintain them. So I think, you know, yes, we already do have somewhat of a connection with the cemetery because of that access issue. And I would hate to not be able to have that access because a tree might have been blocking a road or something like that. And I'd like to see us at least look at something where if there is spare time or capacity or downtime, and we don't, we don't know what, you know, what mowing is going to be this year. Last year, it was pretty crazy, and that's probably part of the reason the grass grew so much after one day that we all ran into. But if we can't do that directly, if we have some spare time, if you will, that we can't plan on having city staff at least help out in some of those critical access areas that we need to get to our, our facilities that we have in that area.
George?
I, I know the bridge is Al that you're speaking of, and yes, the city did assist and help. I think might have totally rebuilt one altogether and then repaired another one.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly this, the agenda.
But I think my understanding is, let's say if a city vehicle, they have the right to go back there to service the city utility, and if there would be a tree that perhaps would be falling onto that bridge or roadway, I thought it was quite certain that the city would remove that part of the, part of the tree right there. I don't like using the word precedence, because every case that comes before us has, you know, has a different scenario that's presented to us. If we would move along with this tonight, what type of a precedence, whoever could answer it, would be set for future requests?
Well, Mayor and Council, certainly the next party could come in and say you've set an example of helping someone else. But I think you've had a long history of looking at each request that comes before you completely and individually to see what the appropriateness is. In terms of the requests from Woodlawn Cemetery, they are very concerned about getting up and operating before Memorial Day. And my concern is, that's when it's our biggest push at the city level in parks and trees to make sure that we get all of our parks ready for the summer. So to be able to find any free time before Memorial Day is probably impossible to do, because we need to get our system up and ready to be able to be accessed all summer by our residents. So that probably doesn't fit their needs extremely well. Certainly, if we need access to the stormwater retention ponds that exist along that property, and we find that there's a tree in the way to get there, we will certainly take care of it and continue to do that. But I think it's, it would be a hardship on our own crews and our own land and our ability to maintain what we currently have to provide significant assistance in this area.
I, I'm a huge fan of Woodlawn Cemetery. Like Michelle, I've spent a long time, many years, you know, with the Cemetery Walk out there. And I do think it's one of the most beautiful cemeteries in the Midwest. And I was appalled last Memorial Day to see the condition it was in. I think the crew did a great job in getting, recovering from that, and a lot of volunteer help and getting it ready so it looked good for Cemetery Walk again in October. I hope that continues. But I do share some of the concerns here that other council people have expressed about the city getting involved and where would it, where, how would it ever end? I'm afraid that we would end up maintaining the cemetery at the expense of other park properties. And, you know, what's the difference between, you know, the golf course asking us to come out there and start maintaining that property in addition and taking trees down? You know, I don't know what the solution is for you. I think to get your coffers up and finding enough funds to hire the people that you need to hire out there is certainly the right approach. And wish you the best of luck with that. But it doesn't seem like there's a lot of, you know, sentiment here for getting the city involved. At least that's the way I'm, I'm reading the comments.
Well, I appreciate your time. I guess, you know, there again, I wasn't looking at the city, looking at maintaining the entire cemetery itself. I think we were looking at one section out of many sections that we maintain. And I guess we looked at it from a standpoint that we wanted to engage in the conversation to see if there would be something that could be a workable plan within, you know, the flexibility of the city as well. And Gary, I, I understand in regards to your situation with shortfall of employees and maintaining the parks as well. You know, it's a challenge. And there again, I, I'm just trying to be proactive in regards to looking at, we're not going to have another Memorial Day like we had last year, because quite honestly, that was pretty unpleasant. And I'll, I'll let you know that anyone that voiced their opinion in regards to the conditions and they left their phone number, I made it a point to having a conversation with that individual to explain the situation, because there's always two sides of the story. But in the same token, it comes down to having the funds to operate the cemetery, as well as the manpower to do it. And so we're trying on our end to do that very well. But as I mentioned to you, when the cemetery in the past has relied on ten to twelve individuals to prepare the cemetery for the upcoming year, and we're down to four, including myself, you have to look at that. So that's why I'm here tonight. So I appreciate the conversation. And, you know, we're going to move forward with the fundraising efforts. It's kind of like planning a family reunion. Everyone wants to come, but no one wants to partake and actually pursue it. So we do have some challenges, but we're kind of working through that, and I'm optimistic. So I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
And moving on to new business, item five point one, is the city equipment certificates issuance. And Mary has distributed a package, first page is on bond rating, and the second is on the actual interest rates.
Mayor and Council, I have good news to report. On, first of all, we have affirmed our very good bond rating of a double A one. And I handed out a listing from Moody's, just a summary. And as you can see, they recognized for the Regional Economic Center. And that includes our manufacturing, educational institutions, and our healthcare presence. And our diversified tax base is exceptional for a city of our size. And overall, the influence of having people coming into the city to work more than residents going out to find their jobs. Favorable debt profile, and we have a very rapid payback of our principal. I think it's ninety, ninety-five percent of our principal is paid back within ten years. Stable financial operations. And then, of course, you have challenges. We rely very heavily on our local government aid for operations. Availability of land for future development is a concern for the Moody's Investors Service. If we would have any significant deterioration of tax base, that would be very much of a negative for the, for Moody's. And also, if we would be depleting our reserves, would also be a big negative, which I don't believe we have any plans to do so. But anyway, so we're double A one. And so another good news part of this agenda item is our rates are very, very good for the equipment certificates. The, we had six bidders, and the low rate is one point three seven, seven. And so we will have a lower, a lower par on the bond issue, which is, which is good, so that we will have less money to pay back for the future for the equipment certificates. These are the certificates, as you know, for paying for public works equipment, some grader and snowplows, trucks, and also two fire trucks. And, and then for the Bud King ice arena equipment. All of this was discussed in the budget during the summertime. And so this is the eight-year equipment certificate that we had talked about last summer. So anyway, very, very good news on, on both fronts, I believe.
Good job. Thank you.
So I believe there's, yeah, there's a, there's a resolution there that will need to be approved that shows in your agenda.
I'd make that motion to approve the attached resolution, accepting the proposal.
Second. Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? Al?
Just a point here, do we want to include in that another council action to continue the contract with Springstead to meet the federal regulatory obligations? I assume that would be part of your.
I certainly do.
You accept that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Kerry's?
Item five point two is the Port Authority Geo Refunding Bonds Series two thousand fifteen A, and distributed earlier this evening, worthy award in results from that bond sale.
And I'll just report, we also had good, very good rates on this bond issue. And this is a refunding of a two thousand five bond issued by the Port Authority. The, it's for Pelzer Street. And the interest rate of that bond issue is about four percent. And you can see the new bond issue tonight, the low rate is one point zero four. So overall, we should have a savings of about eighty thousand dollars, which is why we're pursuing this. When, when we looked at this earlier in January, the estimated savings was about sixty thousand. So because the interest rates have gone down, there's, seems to be more interest in municipal bonds. And also because we have such a good bond rating, there was a lot, it seemed to be a lot of interest. So anyway, we are the benefactors of a one point zero four for this issue. So you can see what the, again, there's a request the Port Authority earlier this evening approved going forth with this refunding. And now it's up to the city council also to approve this refunding.
Michelle move?
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? I don't know why there would be. Proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Kerry's?
Item five point three is a land exchange.
Lucy, would you like to explain this?
Certainly, Mayor and members of council, the property at twelve fifty-seven West Lake Boulevard, known as the Winston Estate property, was looking to be sold. And during the process of selling the property, it was found that the driveway that accesses the property was technically on city land. In addition to that, the city feels as though near the south side of the lot and directly on the side, there's a potential that we could utilize land for future trails. So the idea is to exchange land with the Winston Estate whereby they can have their driveway property that they need for access and for the real estate to be financed for purchase. And the city would gain by having an area in the rear of the property. So the technical actions that would need to take place is if the city would declare it marginal, it could be transferred to the Port Authority. And the Port Authority in turn could go through with the purchase agreement and the exchange.
At one point, didn't the city try to put a trail back through there and couldn't because of this property, see in private?
I'll defer to Chad Google on that.
Wasn't that the one thing that stopped them?
Mayor and Council, I don't think it's the only thing that stopped the trail, though. But there's certainly a section of this property was not usable for trail access. It wasn't flat. The slope and grade wasn't appropriate for a trail. But this would give us that, the portion that we're receiving would, would allow us in the future to develop a trail in that area.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Has, has anybody talked to the neighbor, I'm looking at the drawing exhibit B, that would be, as you look at this on the right? Because right now, those property owners do not have a public access piece of property that, what's their property?
That's us.
And this is, city is on both. Okay. All right, that, that answers my question. And I just was concerned that we, in effect, were, were creating a public.
It's the only house on that side of the, that fine street.
Any other questions?
I would move to approve the attached resolution and introduce the attached ordinance.
Motion? Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any other discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.4, Fire Department Equipment Replacement.
Mayor and council, you approved 2015 budget law for the replacement of a 1993 105-foot aerial and a 1996 50-foot Telsford. The goal of the department and this objective was also reflected in CIP was to increase the 50-foot aerial to a 75-foot aerial and maintain our 105-foot with it being replaced. The biggest issue with dealing with the, the two companies we had was the overall height issue with our central station. We had a number of different formulas that we received from the bidding companies to, to gauge the overall height. We actually did city engineering with the transit and, and shot our angles and so forth. It was deemed 11 foot five would be a safe overall height for both engines. We had some flexibility at the west station to, to kind of elevate the overall height with the 75-foot aerial, but we opted not to just for the simple fact that there was a possibility that 75-footer may have to hit the central station. So, we went with 11 foot five for the overall height. We, we started this process back in, the first week in October. We dealt with two companies. One was Pierce and the other one was Rosenbauer. We have trucks currently from both vendors. They're, they're one and two in the country as far as the actual companies that, that make the trucks. So, they're, they're well-known, well-respected. We ended up, both bids were under budget and working with these companies and with our truck committee, we were recommending that we go with Pierce. Pierce was a bit more expensive, but they met, the, the key to this, they met our overall height requirements. Rosenbauer had some problems. They couldn't build 105-foot aerial to keep it under the 11 foot five. So, they actually had to drop back their bid to 100-foot aerial. The 78-foot aerial Rosenbauer also bid was three inches taller or higher than our 11 foot five threshold, which eat it in us recommending Pierce. Any questions, concerns?
Al, you said the bids were a little different. What was the difference?
Yeah. Overall cost, using a two payment schedule between the two companies, the difference I believe was $129. Now, that's quite remarkable because I've been on a number of engine committees in the past. And, you know, typically an engine which costs about half as much as an aerial, we could be looking at a 30 to 40 to 50,000 dollar difference between vendors. So, we did a number of different things committee-wise this time. We streamlined the number of committee members. We actually brought in a third-party truck vendor to actually go through the specs with us. So, we streamlined our process and I, I'd like to think it actually paid off. To have $129 difference between the two companies is pretty impressive, so.
George, you have a question?
Chief, was there any consideration at all that some departments you see, you know, they have these aerial trucks, but they have buckets on the end of them?
Yeah.
Or was there any consideration or any conversation amongst the department about going with the bucket?
Yeah. We, we actually last week had a bucket truck at a platform at Central Station. The overall height of it is 13.5, so we, I don't think we can get up the apron with it. We have door heights of 12, but councilman, you're absolutely right. That's kind of the, the trend as far as departments, a lot of them are going to, to the platform style just for the safety end of it. But the height range kind of limited that end of it, so.
Al, assuming this moves forward, when would you expect delivery of those units?
We've been promised by both vendors that we'd have a delivery date by December. They, they're looking at a 10-month delivery period. So, both vendors coming around December.
And the disposal of the old trucks, is there anything in the works?
Yeah. Our plan is Rosenbauer and Pierce came in. The 105-foot was 22.5. That was a flat-up trade-in with Pierce and 10 for the 50-foot aerial. Rosenbauer was a little bit cheaper. It was 20,000 for the 105 and 10,000 for the 50-foot. Our goal, if, if we do go with Pierce, is to go through a broker. The broker is Brun, Brundel, well-known throughout the country. And we're hoping to even get a better price on that by brokering it out through them. And that, that number's kind of up in the air until we get some advertisement pricing on it, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Your motion?
I would so move.
I would second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.5 is the 2015 street resurfacing project.
I would move the attached resolution.
A second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion, Al?
Yeah, I, I have a question on selection. And I don't think there's any staff here unless the city manager would, would like to answer that. I have noticed and some residents have also noticed over the last few years, the deterioration of roads in the Sunset Edition, mainly Hiawatha Boulevard, Sunset, and King Street. And I don't see, I was really surprised not to see this on the list. And I'm wondering why it wasn't on the list and when will those streets be resurfaced, assuming we continue with this program next year?
Mayor and council, the streets that were completed last year and the proposed ones for this year were what was originally discussed and felt those streets were in the, the worst condition at the time. We do, we do agree that there are streets in a number of other places that still need replacement. And we certainly intend through the budgeting process to propose another program for next year. And we'll re, be doing a new assessment this summer of the rest of the streets in the city to come up with a priority list that will come to the council again prior to the budget, budgeting process to identify the future streets that will be undertaken under this program. But these are the, we're continuing on with the program and the priorities that we originally started with. And we, and our Public Works and Engineering Department feels that that's the appropriate place to spend that money at this point, just because of the past conditions.
Well, then, from my information, hopefully my constituents' information, I'd like to know what those criteria are that are used to determine the resurfacing decisions and why those particular streets did not meet the, them in the initial phase and, you know, why other streets were selected. I understand the whole process. It's a multi-year process, but, you know, we're, we're patches on patches. And I'm sure there are other streets like that in the city as well.
Is this mostly a windshield survey and staff driving around and observing the conditions?
Actually, the staff will get out, walk the streets, check out curbs. They look for things like how many times has it been seal-coated and the, and the, the middle raise on the street, getting that taken care of because that builds up and then you can't get in and out of your driveways. So, there's a number of things that they look at when they assess those conditions. But we certainly can come back with that information.
I'm sure the amount of traffic on the street is a big factor, too. I mean, lesser-used streets...
It can be, but, but you must remember, most of this is residential streets, so it's not as highly trafficked as some of our larger streets that are available for state aid, which is why we gave you a map that showed some of the projects that have been done in the recent past and some of the things that would be upcoming with our state aid money. But we, we agree, there are, there are streets in many parts of the city that have yet to be done. And we certainly hope that this program continues on and we can meet the needs of all those streets ultimately.
Well, I understand, you know, we have to allocate resources, but just to give you an example, on West King Street, this winter, a snowplow took, took part of the street by the curb by a constituent's house. And I know the street department will go out when the hot mix plant is open and, and patch it again. But that's just an example of where that street is at. And of course, that affects not only the condition, quality of the street, but also drainage issues and things like that going forward. So, it's a big job. And as I say, I'd like to see how the, how the staff makes those recommendations.
I think I'm going to go out and count the number of patched potholes in my street. I'd be curious.
It's true of everybody, I guess.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion, right?
Uh huh. Yes.
Are there any more questions? We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.6 is the Frozen River Film Festival lease agreement for the use of the Masonic Temple office.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded first by Michelle. Any discussion?
I have a question. Are the terms of the lease agreement the same as the previous agreement? Or is this a new one?
Mayor and council, the, the terms are the same. What we're proposing is a period of one year commencing March 3rd, 2015 and ending March 2nd, 2016. We've intentionally kept those terms, I guess, to a limited term, mainly because of the future of the Masonic Temple and repairs that we have to do, that we have the flexibility in the event we have some major repairs in the building. So, we keep the terms lower.
This is a very small office space and they've done a nice job of refinishing the floor and painting the, the office. It looks nice. Any other questions, comments? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 5.7 is the 2015 non-union wages.
Move to approve the wage increase.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Discussion. Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
We'll start with Al tonight.
I have nothing tonight.
Jerry?
Nothing this evening.
Michelle?
Just a reminder, this weekend is the Misato Breakfast and Silent Auction at the Winona Middle School. They're raising funds for their trip in April. A new group of students and adults will be going acting as ambassadors and I know they would appreciate any support. And then also, I just asked, the fire chief is here, but after this third fire, I know that after the first one, there was some talk about coming up with a fire plan for downtown, a plan to deal with vacant lots, buildings that are maybe left standing, burned out for extended periods of time, maybe a way to come up with a way to help the building owners, find resources to rebuild. It's extraordinarily costly to rebuild a building in downtown, especially to conform with historic requirements. So, I was wondering if there is a way staff could work on something. I just, you know, from where we were watching, I mean, it moved pretty quickly getting the burned-out buildings and stuff out, but, you know, years will go by with vacant lots and having a plan in place or options available for use for lots or, in this case, I'm really hoping that building doesn't get torn down on the corner of Third where Rascals used to be. A way to help the building owners deal with that. And I know a lot of cities like La Crosse have immediate, like within, I think, a week, they rip those buildings out. And I'm not suggesting we be that aggressive, but something to maintain safety. Then we're talking about fences being up long-term. Just something that we can look at that we have a better plan for downtown. I know it's, I think when we were watching my building burn, we talked about how it had been over 30 years since we had a fire downtown. And I don't think it's common. And I think sometimes it's just an extraordinarily bad luck. But as you said, things happen and those buildings are not built to withstand extraordinary fire and heat. And the fact that you even managed to save that entire block again and again is pretty extraordinary. So, just, just from my peace of mind, I'd, I'd like there to be something. I, I hate seeing the holes downtown from where we either chose to tear down buildings and put up parking lots or modern structures, but I hate to see the blank spaces from the fires. And I, I wish we had a plan in place that would help people or encourage them to look at rebuilding downtown. Or at least as a city, we, we encourage that through action or funding or resources. I know that the Main Street Program brought in someone from Texas that came up with plans, but when you actually look at what it would cost to build those plans, it's pretty prohibitive. And then to look at what you'd actually get in the course of rent to build a structure that fits with downtown, it's, it's pretty off-balance. So, I don't know if there's an opportunity for that, but that would be my request.
Okay. Thank you. Paul?
Just to add to what Michelle was saying, I think that in, in looking at a plan like that, I think we should also look at assistance that might be rendered to the adjoining properties who are going to go with a long period of time with possibly any income. And, and while they may have insurance, there, that may be something we want to include in the plan is how do we keep those businesses that were going, still going and staying and not simply packing up and leaving. And I'd also like to thank the people who attended the, were able to attend the town hall meeting on jobs and growth in Winona. And I think it's led to a core group of people that will be able to meet again and look at furthering this agenda to bring new families to Winona.
Pam?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank a woman that has served for many years on the city's, the city's Environmental Quality Committee. Bea Hoffman has recently resigned her position, has retired from her position. She's been working with, you know, volunteering with that, with that committee for many, many years. In fact, she and I served there, on there together. So, I'm sorry to see her go. She has a lot of expertise and, but I wanted to honor her years of service here tonight. Except for that, I just wanted to reiterate what the mayor said in that is inviting everyone to the Frozen River Film Festival this weekend. There are many, there are many specific speakers and films, but there's a lot of fun and there's music and food as well as great presentations. Winona Leduke as kind of a add-on to the whole, will be here, one-time vice presidential candidate from years ago. She will be here to speak on Thursday night. And I will be in the lobby on, of the Science Building on Saturday, happily manning the table of, of Winona's Power Up Winona Solar Energy Garden Initiative. So, if you are interested in solar energy in Winona, come on down and we'll tell you about it.
Hey, thank you. George?
Thank you. I just want to just take a couple of moments here. Lately, and I don't know where it's all coming from, is there's been a lot of discussion about our city parks, you know? Do they know where the city parks are? Are the city parks maintained? You know, what's the value of the parks and so on and everything? First of all, the parks in our city are very, very good parks. They're very well-maintained and they are in good condition. Yes, they can probably use some work and yes, that, that will be coming along. Administration is the overseer of our parks and the policies. They bring it to the city council. I don't think we need another governing body advising city administration and then bringing stuff to city council on how our, how our parks should be run and what else should be done with them. The park maintenance, as we know, is in charge of the parks plus many other things. Yes, they probably could use another person on staff to help with the work that they have to do. Their work list is always growing. But if a person has a concern about any park whatsoever, you can contact any one of the seven of us sitting right here. I know as I do it, I've done it years ago, I get a call, I would call Bruce Fuller, Steve Jasnoch, and today Larry Tulius. They either go out, they take care of it right away, or within the next day or so, depending upon what it is. We have very, very good overseeing on our parks. We have very, very good overseeing on our parks. Now, the public also has stepped up. Let's begin with the Lake Park Bike Path, Coca-Cola and many private donors, over $600,000 in resurfacing that bike path that takes us through our beautiful lake. A gambling park, as we know, is simply a natural state area as it sits across the river. Sinclair Park, across from St. Martin's Church and School, the Winona Basketball Association, along with the Maury Miller Foundation, put money into it, resurfaced it, new, uh, new basketball hoops, as was talked about earlier tonight in a pre-meeting, how they have taken care of that park. The East End Rec Center, now we're looking at perhaps, you know, modernizing the skate park, maybe moving it. At the time, Councilwoman White was on the council, she worked with the group through, I believe it was Playful Cities USA, got a grant, I believe, for 10,000 or 12,000, this group she worked with, they helped modify and update the East End Rec, uh, the East End Rec outside, looks very, very nice. Currently, right now, we have a levy park committee looking at doing things down by the levy. You can go down there right now, sit at the table, even before, if they do anything at all, have your pop, have your beer, get a nice view of the river as you sit there and enjoy the peacefulness of the water. Sobieski Park, down east, there's a group, the East End Neighborhood Watch Group, is in, is in the process of soliciting funds to demolish the building down there, and there was new playground equipment put down there, and that also will be more of a beautiful park than what it already is. Just in closing, I'm simply saying that our parks are in good shape, just one thing, the softball fields, now that Winona State no longer has their plan, we as a council will have to come up, it's probably gonna be this year, 'cause we're hearing a lot about, uh, renovation of the softball fields, and that's something that we're probably gonna be addressing in our budget session, if not before. But our parks are in good shape, we don't need any more governance or any more bodies, what we need, what we need is just the help and support of the community, and from the, from the aforementioned, we have it, and we'll move forth from here. Thank you.
Thank you.
And under the consent agenda, there are three items, approve the minutes from the February 2nd meeting, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Flood Plane Management Ordinance, and to approve the summary publication of that Flood Plane Ordinance.
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Mayor, I move for adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.
I have some stuff tonight, and then I'll have some tomorrow for my...